All right. Hello, everyone, and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I am Coach Ashley. We're joined today by our Get Oiling team as well as some special guests who you will meet here shortly. Get Oiling team, say hello. For those of you who haven't met yet, we have Greg and Amanda Killwine, founders, and Kim, who is on our support team. As well, if you are with us, you've probably chatted with all of them at some point in the inbox. So you guys say hello, show your faces.
Hey, everyone. We're really glad you're here. They've got an exciting weekly work session for you today. So I'm excited to dive in.
Fantastic. Kim, good morning. Yes, hello, everybody, and welcome to today's session and excited to see what we have for today.
Morning, everybody. It's super fun to be here with you guys again, and I'm really excited for this week, too. Special guests always make it a little bit more fun. So let's get started.
Awesome. Here we go then. All right. So guys, I'm going to share my screen with you. We've got just a couple of slides for you, and then we're going to get into some interviews. We're going to share what's working right now with distributors at Get Oiling, distributors in Young Living who are using Get Oiling. And anyway, we'll talk about that in a minute. So today, we're going to talk about systems, specifically, systems that work to grow Young Living. We'll kind of dispel a little bit of the myths about systems, talk about what is and is not a system. And of course, you'll get to meet and chat with and ask questions of a couple of our special guests. So first, welcome. If you've never been here before, we host these live calls for free every single week for anyone who's growing a business with Young Living, whether you are with Get Oiling or not. So we're here to help you grow. Today, we're going to talk about the power of systems to grow your business with Young Living, examples of systems that specifically work, proven, really work for Young Living. And you're going to hear from real-life distributors who have transformed their businesses with systems. And then, of course, we'll do our live Q and A. If you came here today looking for help and support with something technical, right? We don't just come here to teach and talk at you every week. We actually have an opportunity to go live with you and work with you on whatever you are dealing with right now that you feel like you need some help with in your business. So if you came here with questions, frustrations, concerns today, head over to the Q and A box and put those in, and we have a section dedicated to helping you right after we are finished with this portion of the call. All right. So go ahead and add those, like I said, to the Q and A box. So first, let's talk about what systems actually are. All right. So at their core fundamentally, systems are processes or procedures or steps taken manually or digitally that are followed the exact same way each time in order to achieve a specific outcome. So what does this mean in the context of sharing, for instance? This means that you share the same way with each person. You ask the same questions, for instance, or the same type of questions. You share the same type of resource every time so that every time you approach doing a thing in your business, you're doing it the exact same way. That is a system, right? And there are different ways that you can systematize different parts of your business. We'll talk about some examples of those here in just a minute. Systems are also importantly, a collection of those processes, right? So where you've got multiple things that you systematized, that you've plugged together that work well. And this is something, if you do it this way, if you have multiple systems working for you in your business that you connect together, you are then able to accomplish 10 times more. I mean, quick show of hands, how many of you guys have felt like you were just too busy to do another thing to grow your business? Have you ever felt that way? And maybe all the time, right? The reason why we feel this way is because we have inefficient or lack of systems working for us in our business. And the thing is, is you can be brand new. You could have signed up today, five minutes ago, and you need a system the same way that someone who has 6,000 people on their team needs systems. And the sooner you start working with these, the more effective you're going to be as you grow, and the more duplicable your growth is going to be for your team, most importantly. All right. And then finally, just to kind of clarify here, this can include varying degrees of automation, right? Systems can simply start from saying, okay, when I meet someone on Facebook, I am going to go say hello to them first and then ask them this question, and then I'm going to follow up three days later and continue that conversation and ask another set of questions. You see what I mean? That's a very manual approach, but it is a system. A system can also be putting out blog posts every month with a lead magnet attached to them so that people can get in and receive a campaign from you that teaches a product or a concept or an idea so that they get more curious about joining Young Living. Does that making sense? Quick show of hands? If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. All right. So let's talk about systems specifically that work for Young Living. This is just a snapshot, you guys. There are lots of ways to systematize. And we have, together with someone who's achieved tremendous growth in this company, we have partnered up and put together a comprehensive system, meaning a system that includes multiple systems inside of it with a complete blueprint for you to follow that's simple to follow, if you can follow directions, right? That's a caveat. But let's talk about some of these systems that work for Young Living. First, funnels. Who here knows what a funnel is? Quick show of hands. Do you know what a funnel is? We got, I know quite a few of you because you're around, and if you know Get Oiling, then you know that funnels are something that you can build with us. It's not complicated, you guys. It's 2020 right now as we're filming this. And for the past 10 years, every successful six- and seven-figure business, brick and mortar or not, knows about needing one or has, most likely, one or more funnels that they use for their business. It's not rocket science, and it is a necessary thing to have if you want to attract people at scale in a way that doesn't rob your life of all of its free time, right? Because while our goal is to talk to and share and communicate and get as many people as possible as members in Young Living, we need to find ways to qualify those people, to educate those people, and not be the end-all, be-all for every single touch that needs to be made throughout that process. Funnels help you do that, and we are going to talk about something that we have that will help you just put it in place, and it works for you. Okay? We're also, another system that works for Young Living are conversation flows. You know, I was mentioning, if you meet somebody on Facebook, and then you go ask them this set of questions, and you follow up three days later. That is an example of a system that works, and we have that inside of the system we're going to talk about today. And then, follow-up plans. This is something that we have, and you can have reminders that you set for yourself using whatever varying set of tools you might use. We have this built into the Get Oiling Contact Manager that allows you to stay on top of your follow-up. How many of you guys have said, I have got to follow up with that person because they sounded interested, and then you never did? Probably a million times, right? We've all done this. Having follow-up plans in place to make sure that you are, again, doing the same thing with every different part of your business, systematizing your business, that is the thing that is going to transform your results, I think baseline, more than anything else, making sure that you're not dropping the ball. And then campaigns. A lot of you guys may be doing this already. What these are, and there is a caveat here. If you're going and you're teaching a class in person somewhere, that's not a campaign. But if you're doing an online class that's arriving via Instagram stories, Facebook, or text or email classes, those are drip campaigns. That is actually a primary component of a funnel. So you may actually have systems like this working for you or parts of systems working for you in your business if you're using these types of things. So campaigns are something that can absolutely transform your available time in your business. How many of you spend over 50% of your time in your business educating people on products? Like most of us, right? This is something that can absolutely be systematized and allow you to do more of the income-producing activities, i.e. talking to people, getting them started with Young Living, getting them onto Essential Rewards, right? If you systematize that part of your business specifically for your members, right? You can absolutely move the needle just by being more productive. And then finally, content marketing, right? What this is, is getting people curious in various places, whether that's Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, your blog, YouTube, wherever. Getting people curious and generating leads with a lead magnet, right, with a funnel that will bring people in who are qualifying themselves, total strangers, who are like, hey, you sound like somebody I need to learn from. Tell me more about what you have, right? And we're going to show you how you can get that today. So what I'm talking about, this comprehensive system, is a thing that's called Go for Gold. This is something that we partnered up with Martha Krejci to produce. She had created a course around her success story of how she went gold in six months in Young Living in 2019. And we put our heads together and created, based on what she knows and our background with systems around business and business development, and created a comprehensive course to show you guys how to absolutely crush your business and get your free time back in a way that is simple and makes sense using systems. And today, I want to share with you guys some amazing stories from people who are using Go for Gold right now in the field, who are seeing results, seeing major shifts in their business, and even more importantly, not just about, you know, OGV increases and hitting a new rank, which is super exciting. We're going to talk about that today. But the idea that you can get your life back, right? The idea that this can be a business that provides residual income without you having to work 24/7 to get it. That's our goal for you. You have the ability in this business, and it's so unique in this industry where you can create a thing that pays you month over month over month, right? And you don't necessarily have to slave away and spend all of your available time to get it done, right? We want to help you achieve that. So if you don't know about this yet, you can go to getoiling.com/goforgold. There's also a Facebook group that's totally free where there's free training, where you will get lots of great information. It's called Because of Gary Gold-getters. Put those hashtags in. Search for that. There's just shy of 10,000 people in that group as we speak right now. You can go in and learn not just about this course and these systems, but also just be a part of a Team YL community that's super supportive and just really amazing. So yeah, let's go ahead and first open the floor up. How many of you, quick show of hands, have Go for Gold and are following the system right now? Woo, a lot of us. Look at those hands. Yes. All right. So if you have a story to share or some kind of feedback to share about Go for Gold, go ahead and put that in the comments. We would love to hear what you have to say, and we'd love for you to share because, you know, we can stand here all day and say, oh, well, this works, you know, because we're kind of here talking at you. I would love for more of you guys to hear from each other about the transitions and the shifts that are being made. Because again, it's not about blasting through the highest rank. It is about being able to create a lifestyle business, right? Something that gives you time freedom, which is priceless, something that allows you to get more of what you want out of life, which is priceless. So how are these things shifting for you? Leave us a comment and let us know. So right now, we're going to hear from some folks who are using this system right now with success. And I'm going to go ahead and get out of this slide share here right now. And let's meet Emily. You're like closest in video for me. Let's chat with Emily here real quick. Emily, please introduce yourself and, you know, kind of let us know about your journey so far with Young Living and with Go for Gold.
Okay. Hi, I'm Emily Venido, and I joined Young Living September 2015. I've been around for a little over four years. I was going into maternity leave when I got my kit. I came from a corporate background for 20 years, so I had no intention of doing the business. I had a full-time career that was, you know, it was meeting all my needs. So I thought, and I went back to work after maternity leave with day number two and decided, nope, I want out. I want to do this Young Living thing full-time and put a plan in place with my husband. And here we are, years later. I grew pretty fast in the beginning. I hit senior star in a month, silver within six. That was August 2016. I hit silver, and I'm still silver today. So I've heard it over and over again, getting to silver quick, but kind of bought out. And I've been going at it full-time. I have tried all the things, all the boot camps. I have tried network, business networking groups. I've done a lot of in-person classes at my house. For my team and for myself, I was big thing for upquing in-person classes. It definitely helped me grow in the beginning. What's liking about it is that all the energy it took to get people to my house, the planning, two, three weeks ahead of time. As cost-effective as I would make the class, it still had a cost. Putting the event on and then following up with people, it just seemed like so much of my month was filled with getting people to the class and hosting the event for very little return. So my husband's like, my husband's into business, too, and he was like, your return on investment is horrible here, you know? And it really was a more time method, a financial investment. I also did online classes. I also hired a social media coach because that was where the shift started going to. And I spent a lot of time and money learning about Instagram. And again, it was almost like a distraction because it was taking me away from what I love and that's helping people get started with Young Living, living a natural life, and getting people getting going in the business. All these paths were such indirect ways to the end goal, and that thing has been working. And I got my, heading my statement this year, and I was really disappointed that my annual income was less than I used to make in a month in my corporate job. And I had a really good salary, but I had been doing this now for several years, and it was, it was time to make a decision whether I'm going to pursue this or not. And I'm a red, and I don't want to be a quitter, but I also cannot be, you know, put my head in the sand because this is not working. A couple of months ago, though, in November, I discovered Get Oiling. Some are a little different. I discovered Get Oiling before Martha, and then the shift started to begin to take place for me. I discovered Get Oiling, and to me, it was a no-brainer because I had been spending so much money on overhead for product broadcast. I paid for engagement source classes to plug in their project broadcast. I paid for a website. I paid for stock photos for my social media. I paid for a couple of other services for social media coaching from Crossline Diamond. So all in all, I was putting out between $200 and $400 a month, if you include Pat Mail and special coaching that I took. And so really, my overhead, I had to take 500 off the top, and then, you know, we have a healthy ER because we've been using Young Living forever, so that's another 500. And so it was a lot going out and a lot coming in. So with Get Oiling, I was able to replace all those services for $30. So when people are pushing back on the cost of $30 to run this business and send emails, and not only did it replace all those subscriptions that I was paying for, it also made it better because there's automated systems, automated email campaigns, automated follow-up. I was paying a different company for CRM, so everything is now under one roof for one price. And if I send a text message, it's noted in the CRM. A follow-up is graded. And it just took me back to my corporate days, which I don't miss. I never want to go back to corporate. But I'm able to have all those like multimillion-dollar company database systems in my little, you know, one-man show here. So it's made my life so much easier time-wise, being more cost-effective, all the things. And then, like, right before the holidays, I discovered Martha through Get Oiling, and I signed up for her program, and it took me a while to get on board with it because it was like one more program. But once the light bulb came off, about six months, six weeks into me having her course, I just felt a whole new, I believed in the business again, and I know I can get to RCD now. And I really started losing faith in that, and I never lost faith until the past, 2019 was just soul-crushing because it was just going down, down. I was sliding backwards month after month, and I didn't know what to do. And like, I have zero doubt that this is like such a blessing for all of us. Sorry for the rant. I'm just a little passionate about it.
Well, no, thank you so much. That is so powerful. So you guys, I know you're breaking up a little bit with, I know your video is frozen, hon. If you want to, I don't know, maybe like refresh it or something. But just to kind of recap, for those of you who didn't catch the audio there, Emily was spending upwards of $500 per month in social media coaching and programs and software and subscriptions and all of this stuff just to grow the business, and she got rid of basically everything. She got Get Oiling, which is your basic, at what, about $30 a month? And I think you told me you use a social media, like a planning app called Planoly, right? I'm looking into that, by the way. That's like nine bucks a month, right?
Yeah, Planoly, $9 a month.
Yeah, that's it. And that's actually something, you know, we'll look into how we might be able to even suggest that inside of the course because that is getting into creating content and establishing yourself as a go-to expert so you don't have to chase people, and you don't have to like, you know, be the oil lady and only the oil lady, right? People can come to you interested, but now you're just, you're paying what, like 40 bucks a month? To go from 500 a month to like less than 50, that's insane. And then, so here's, this was really cool. It's just something you shared with me yesterday. When you started following the system, you signed up your first person in kind of a new way than you had been doing previously, right?
Yeah.
Tell us about that.
Yeah. So the way we've been taught over and over again is when someone's interested, you send them the link, and then you follow up, and you don't see that kit sale go there, and you check in a couple of days later, and you check in a couple of days later, and it's just this awkward thing. Fingers crossed, I hope they sign up. Or we have our link in our Instagram, and we do our stories, and the call to action is link in bio to order. And there are people having success with that. I have been doing that for two years, and not one kit sale has come that way. And I was, well, yeah, in a post, I had asked some questions, and Coach Ashley and Martha jumped in and were saying, I never send a link. I'm like, what? No, somebody says they're interested. Set up a call, walk them through. So literally, the next day, I had an opportunity to do that. I had a message from someone I had been working with, and she said, I'm ready to order today. And normally, I would have sent her the link, and so the process goes, and the confusion with the website and all that. Instead, I said, great, what time are you available? These are a couple of time slots I gave. She said, 1:00. We got on the phone at 1:00. I've never talked to this person in my life. It's a, we are Facebook friends through mutual friends. It was somebody who started following me, so I got a chance to know her on the phone, find out her needs, walk her through, get her on ER, explain to her how it works. She's all in. She's in the group. We set up a follow-up call to unbox Zoom call when her kit comes, which is tomorrow. And the relationship has already been formed. Everything just felt so much more, I was way more in control of the sale than just putting a link out there and hoping and praying that they order. So actually, today, I got my second message through the system, and I got it, I thought it was you, Coach Ashley. It was from an Ashley saying, the kit's 155, right? And I'm like, yeah, why don't you? Then I realized it's a different Ashley, and I said, great, I'm jumping on a call. I'll call you at 11:00, and we'll get your kit ordered. And it's just these little tiny things that are not rocket science, but it's just such a smarter way of viewing business. It's like, the longer we've been doing this business, the more complicated us distributors are making it in putting more and more steps between us and the final, like the end result we want, which is to help people. So.
That is so powerful. And tell me a little bit about, oh, I think we had talked yesterday about sort of this tribe that you're building, right? Like, through these systems that we've got in place and how you're sort of strategically putting yourself out there, you're attracting new people into your life, right? Like, what is that looking like for you?
Yes. So I, the longer I was in Young Living, the more I lost my identity of why I got in here because we have so many products, and there are so many cross-line groups, which is amazing. But my, I guess, my bat signal, which I didn't know that was, well, that was a thing, but my, who I am and why I got started became more and more diluted into just this like natural living. So what I talk about was very diluted, and I wasn't attracting anybody. I was, you know, these non-toxic cleaner and this and that and everything else, which is all great. But I get the importance of the bat signal, and to me, at the end of the day, it comes back to mental health and mental illness, healing ourselves through radical self-care. So once I started talking about that, and that's really all I've been sharing, and this is very new, like two weeks new, my, even my education groups are now opening up and sharing more about that. The people that are coming to me are coming to that. And why that's exciting is because it's, you know, it's not someone just sharing about, I don't know, something that removes the stain, which is great, but that's not going to get people to stay and feel a community. You're not like tuning into the Facebook group to hear the next like cleaning hack that, you know? But if something can like change your day and help you become a better person today, have a happier life, be more present for your kids or your spouse, like, these are things that change the needle. And obviously, what like got the fire burning in my belly again. And so I'm like so excited about this business again. Like, it just really became very diluted. And now I'm just like, I have my purpose, my passion, and I'm like ready to run.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
I love it. I love it. I love it. I love it. So if you could give one piece of advice to someone who is maybe going to get started with Go for Gold, what would your advice be for them?
Okay, my number one advice, do not watch all the videos and then come back and try to do the assignments. Do not try to bounce around. Do not try to just do bare minimum and move ahead, bare minimum and move ahead. Because I did all those things, and I got the course, I got them during the holiday, so let's scratch that. Say January 1, I was able to start. I really didn't start until last Monday. And I went hard because I wasted a month and a half watching all the videos, getting overwhelmed, thinking, this is not for me. This, none of this makes sense. I don't get it. None of the pieces made sense. I thought it was wait. I thought it was, if you've been in the business for a while, you may feel like this is overkill. Why are we creating lead madness? Why do I need this? This is too much. All I want to do is share about Young Living. And when I finally got out of my own way and decided to go all in, I went back to day one. I watched the video. I did the task. I didn't move on until I was really happy with the work, and it came from my heart and not just like checking the box that I did it. To be honest with you, I took a lot of the templates and just reworded them into my own words, and it wasn't even my story. And so I wasn't excited. And when I went back and I did it for me, one, do one video, one assignment. Don't move on until it's done, and then move on to the next. And the reason why is everything is there for a reason and a purpose. And when you get to like step five, and you've built all these blocks, you are going, your mind is going to get blown when you see how it all comes together. And if you skip that, you're never going to have that mind-blowing experience, and you're going to sell yourself short.
Amen. Thank you so much, and we're so excited to see your continued growth and really appreciate you taking the time to share your story with us today.
Thanks.
All right. Hey, Beata, please come out. Introduce yourself, please.
Okay, so my name is Beata, and do you want me to just share my journey a little bit with Young Living? Okay, so I started with Young Living three years ago. I started as a product user. I was also on maternity leave. And I didn't even buy the kit, to be honest. I was poor. And in Canada, you can be a member without buying a kit. So I just started with ER right away and really only did it because my mom wanted me to and to help support her. But I fell in love with the products. I was actually running a business at the time. During my maternity leave, I really just honed down and decided I didn't want to go back to work. So I was running a hand lettering and calligraphy business. It was really great. But then I caught the vision for Young Living along the way. So my mom taught a class for me two years ago around this time. And then I taught my first class six months later, just doing a DIY make and take kind of thing. I had no clue what I was doing. And then I started kind of consistently teaching classes probably a couple of months after that. But then, again, my other business kept taking over every summer. It would be a good chunk of time. And this time last year, I was working on 2,000 coasters. I had to hand paint them all. And I was like rising to silver, and then as soon as that hit, I just kept slowly dropping back down where I wasn't even executive by August 2020. There's 2019, sorry. And then I went to Diamond Bound, which was awesome. In 2019, I heard somebody talking about a system, and I was like, that's what I need. I need a system to make this more simple. Nobody's talking about a system. But I was like, she didn't tell us how to do a system. And I even saw something this morning was like, my system is talking to people, getting them to like fall in love with the products, getting them on ER and getting them to run the business. And I'm like, that's a great system to start, but that's not automation, and that's not making your life more simple. And so anyways, I stopped doing my other business in October, the very beginning of October 2019. I went back up to executive. My OGV kind of skyrocketed during that time. And then I just felt in December, like there was something that I was still missing with this whole system thing. I know there's that one app where you can do emails and Um, I know there's that one app where you can do emails and texts. I forget. Emily mentioned it. Um, and I was thinking about getting that app so that I could start doing some sort of automation with it. When somebody signed up, I could give them a campaign that walked them through the starter kit. Um, but it just wasn't happening yet. And anyway, so I was really excited to hear about Martha's course. Because it was something completely different and something that I really felt like was missing from Young Living. But was implemented implemented in Show Me A Sign, which was my my previous handmade business. And um, yeah, so that's what I started doing. I started doing the training at the beginning of January. Um, I just did it step by step and I feel like I fully finished it at the end of um January. So it's been pretty awesome.
That's fantastic. So you've actually got a a new rank on the horizon, right? You're about to rank up and you've got people in your organization that are duplicating this too, right? Can you tell us about that?
Yeah, so um I've been executive for over a year. I'm about to hit silver this month. I still have to get a chunk of OGV to hit it, but my one leg is solid at four K and my other one is um sitting at around three right now. So it's gonna happen. Um, I have one person um ranking up to senior star. She just hit star last month. And she is like really encouraged because she never thought she could do anything like this. Um, I have two senior stars that just ranked up recently who are hoping to rank up to executive this month. We have like three to four new stars in our team this month. And um, I'm slowly getting them to get on this idea of automation and a funnel system. And I'm just showing and leading by example. And even a lot of people in our kind of like, uh, we have a team called Pure Culture. It's it's run by um our diamond upline in Canada. And uh, it's been an awesome team and I feel like more and more people are slowly diving into the idea of a funnel system. And I'm hoping as I, you know, do it first, more people will join because then momentum will build. And I think a lot of people are scared of this when it really is just at the end of the day, a business tool. Um, so I'm hoping soon some of my members will jump on the whole Get Oil-ing, get their website. Even my mom, my mom's going to be doing this. She's my upline. She's going to be doing it next, but she needed to finish her um AFT training and her site K training first. Um, and then she can incorporate all of that on her Get Oil-ing website too. So it's.
Yes.
A beautiful way to incorporate all of it. Um, and yeah, so I'm I'm just hoping more and more people will hop on it. But I have been giving them um links from my website that they can send to their people. Like I have a um a one-on-one class that when people can't come to in-person classes or they can't seem to make the online classes that we would host once a week. And they just kept can't make they kept missing out on it because they're putting their kid to bed or somebody's sick or life happens and we just couldn't get the numbers to show up. And now just like, hey, send them this link and they can learn everything about the starter kit. And we've had a bunch of enrollments that way this month. Um, and it's honestly last night I was like, what do I there the night before I was like, do I just watch TV? Like, I'm kind of bored, uh, because I just feel like it's been automated and I know the the volume is coming up. And we're still doing in-person classes, but I'm not because they weren't working for me. So I still do travel um to teach classes for people in my team who have brand-new, fresh people interested in the oils. But then I also have automation after that. So I'm hoping that more and more people join this.
Awesome. And so one of the things that you've done, and I thought that this was just brilliant, for yourself, you have a an exposure funnel. You you basically built a funnel to share that one-on-one class. But you're also just the page that has the video of you giving the one-on-one class. Your team is using that to sign people up too, right?
Yeah, yeah. So whenever I give somebody a link who is my prospect, they sign up on um like the lead magnet page or whatever, the landing page. They sign up on a landing page. But if they're not my prospect, I just give my um member the link to the video. So that I'm not, you know, going after their lead. Um, but then I for my people, I obviously have them within my contacts and I can send them emails as like a promotion comes on or anything like that. Um, and then I use a lot of times Instagram to get people into that um lead magnet too.
Fantastic.
That video.
And uh, let me see, there was something else that we had talked about. Um, you're actually doing, you're automating some of your teaching and training using the system too, right? How are you doing that?
So I have a vault and then I have a one-on-one class in there and it's um it's a great like step-by-step. So I do my story, our generation's story, Young Living's story, and then the starter kit. And even though I I have a video on um just another landing page for people to go to and watch. I feel like even this video is a great way for people to learn how to teach a class if they wanted to, just the step-by-step of teaching people through stories. Um, and then I also have a business vault section where I'm doing social media training right now, like fifteen-day challenge with my team. And uh, I just taught them about ways to utilize their Instagram feeds to create conversations. Use their Instagram stories to create conversations and then use inboxing to create conversations. Um, but not making their social media um something that they're doing just to get followers, but to actually create conversations. Because it's pointless to build a huge following if nobody's ending up in your inbox asking you anything. Yeah, so I and that's something I had to learn along the way too, because it just wasn't working anymore. So teaching people how to use stories with poll options where you could actually end up in their inbox because they asked you about your facial serum. And then you can send them your facial serum. Um, the oh my gosh, what is it called? The landing page where they sign, they sign up and they are now in your system. So I just created a system within the system. I feel like it's working for people. And uh, just kind of getting themselves out there and talking about it more and more and more people are excited about the business now. So the the land, sorry, the um business vault was really fun to put together. Um, and I I feel like I'm really only going to need a couple of them, but the social media challenge was really fun. Utilizing social media effectively and not just putting stuff up there.
Yeah, how how has that shifted for you since using this system? You know, like the as opposed like the way that you would normally have been posting prior to learning from this system and Go For Gold. Um, and then what you're doing now, how has that changed?
So I did find that I I knew a decent amount about social media. Um, especially through Lindsay T. Marino's Social Media Challenge to not just be putting like, here are my oils. To not like rebrand Young Living, like you're creating your own brand. And I think Martha's training really helped. Um, just find a very like specific niche for the stuff that I was posting and to always post on brand, which. Um, from my previous business, I was just posting signs. I was posting the product and that worked for me. Um, but with this stuff, like, nobody wants to follow another Young Living. Like, people would, people are following Young Living if they want to follow Young Living. They're typically already members. So I just found a lot of people were just following uh the the Young Living pages because they're already Young Living members. So being able to create posts that were really about my life. And now people follow me and they end up in my inbox saying, thank you so much for the like the content that you post. You make me feel like a better mom. I really love learning about non-toxic living. Half the time they don't even know I use Young Living, which we're like anyways, I'm I'm getting like when they end up in my inbox. And I can ask them the questions about what well, what oils are you using? And I can create those conversations, right? Or use a conversation cheat sheet, which has been really helpful, just even with knowing where do I go with this? And even with I was chatting with my mom, she was like, well, this person reached out to me and she's telling me about all these issues she's having and I can't stop thinking about it. And I was like, that's literally in the conversation cheat sheet. Like, if you can't stop thinking about it, like, keep going, working through forward. And then when you literally can't stop thinking about it, so wait twenty-four hours and say, hey, I can't stop thinking about you. Because that's naturally, we know how to help them. And then being able to convert those conversations into, well, I either have an in-person class coming up or I have this online class you can watch or whatever. Or I can teach you just by holding your hand, everything that I know. But anyways, with this whole automation, like honestly, it's freed up so much of my time. So.
That is so awesome. I'm seeing a question was coming through. Diana was asking if you're getting enrollments from those inbox messages. So these these aren't Young Living people that are reaching out to you. They don't know that you're with Young Living. And you're signing these folks up for Young Living, right?
Yeah, so I think a lot of people um followed me at one point because one of my like posts went viral about me no longer using birth control. And how I um, how I helped my symptoms with polycystic ovarian syndrome. And so I got a bunch of followers from an influencer who I signed up, who were, um, you'll get there. Um, but he shared my content and I got a lot of followers through that. So they didn't even know that I was really using oils. And I have had a couple of signups through people I don't know. Um, so I'm from Canada. I've signed somebody up from the UK. I've signed somebody up from the States that I don't know. I have a bunch of people from the States. A lot of actually young students who are just waiting to finish school and uh to, you know, get some income back into their lives before they get the kit. But they've even been able to watch some business training videos and even just that, even just sending a video instead of me sending thirty voice notes, which. They're not going to listen to thirty voice notes, even just sending them like a thirty-minute video on the business has been really helpful too. Um, I just feel like it's so much easier. And even when it doesn't come from me, like that creates, it's just simple. And so anyways, I I am getting signups through people who chat with me in the inbox and just even creating that relationship too. Um, if it's not a starter kit sale that moment, that's okay, but they're still following my stuff. And I do find that even just by using the poll option, if I do talk specifically about an essential oil. Or if I do talk about the starter kits that we have a starter kit sale right now, I'm telling people the way I do use certain essential oils. And having that poll option of um, send me more details and then being able to get into people's inboxes. So it's not just me creating a poll and then nobody reaching out to me. Um, I have, they said, send me more details. So I can send them more details, right? So um, just utilizing those things effectively, or even if somebody comments on my post. Even if it just has to do with mom life and I see that they comment here and there, just going in their inbox and being like, hey, thank you so much for being involved on my Instagram. I really appreciate you commenting and and being able to then work through forward and to get to know people through that. So, yeah.
That's fabulous. Would you be willing to screen share and show us maybe what you've done with your site? Uh, maybe just like a funnel, just an example to to give people a look at what you're doing, even the one-on-one tunnel, I think would be fine.
Yeah, um, I honestly don't know how to do that. I see the screens share option.
Got you, got you, got you. Uh, so it's yeah, it's a little green button and then you would share your browser. Uh, your browser window, but open, open up the link first so you don't have to go into your back office to all that kind of stuff. And while while you're pulling that up, I'm going to go ahead and and share Emily's. I know there was a little bit of a connection issue, so I want to make sure you guys can see hers clearly. So I'm going to grab a share, Beata, let me know when you're ready.
Okay.
Um, you guys, this is an example of a completed customized Get Oil-ing site that Emily has done. Per the system in uh and Go For Gold. Uh, it is gorgeous. She has her own site menu where you can go off to her blog. Where she has this cool post here where she does a comparison with thieves and and another, uh, you know, super nasty household cleaner. Um, she links off from here to a sway from Grow Workspace. Uh, and you know, where where people can learn more about the product because she's talking about it there in in this video. Uh, you can on her page. And this is going to be a little bit more techie. Uh, and by the way, we walk you through baby steps every single step of this process in the order that you need to create it, uh, in order for you to get it done. So for those of you who are like, I'm not techie, it's okay. Well, there are videos you can pause and stop and start and there is worksheets that you can fill out. So you have CliffsNotes and cheat sheets and all that kind of good stuff. And you've got support in a community and great feedback from a community there that is all Team YL. And the Get Oil-ing team is in there and super supportive every week as well. So she's got this, uh, you know, free guide, three steps ever, uh, three steps to her best day ever daily protocol. So she's sharing her daily protocol. For you guys who want to get an explanation of a funnel. Basically, what a funnel is, is a means by which uh you attract people to give you their information in exchange for something that they want to get. So the thing that they want to get is called a lead magnet. What Emily is giving away here, this daily protocol is a lead magnet. And here's her pop-up. So I'm going to put my info in here. And we're going to go and see her lead magnet. Please don't uh go to her site and do this. Use this video so that she can have her own leads in her system and not be confused by by folks who do not want to buy from her. All right. Uh, and same for Beata when she shows hers. So she's got her best day ever protocol. We show you exactly how to do this. We have literally a template that you can swap out images and change the text on. That's all you gotta do. So she's got this great little thing here. She talks about her daily routine and then she's got a call to action to contact her where you can actually pop up and see. Guys, we show you exactly how to do this in the course. All right. And then as we scroll down, we see this is really beautiful. She's got her story here. She's got um, she's got a group that this points off to. She has a lead group on Facebook. We teach you that strategy, Martha's strategy. On how to funnel people through strategic groups where they get dripped information so they warm up to get to get started. So you're not spending your time chasing people, right? So she's got a community, she's got a blog and it's all there. Isn't that gorgeous? You guys, I think a lot of people, they 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 check out Get Oil-ing's websites and they're like, oh, everything looks the same. No, you can make it look however you want. And we'll actually show you how to do this, start to finish with the full strategy in place and go for gold. Beata, you are you ready for your share?
Yes.
Perfect.
Right. I don't know if I'm doing this right, but let me know if it starts working.
Yes, here we are. Perfect.
Okay, so my uh front page is a video of me. Um, it is like a minute something long. Um, and it leads people directly to reading my story, which is a little bit below, and then getting my guide. Um, so and then my guide, again, once you kind of read my story and you scroll down a bit more. Oh, well, I already did this, but let me see if I can refresh it. But typically, when you scroll down, the the thing pops up again. There we go. Get my guide. Um, so I guess I can show you. I'm just going to sign myself up. Oh, okay. Well, that didn't work properly. So I need to figure that out.
No worries.
Twice. But so you need to.
All right. So you you need to make sure that your redirect is to the lead magnet. You're redirecting to the landing page that you made in in lesson one.
Yeah, so um, the reason why I chose to go this route is because I want people to go to their email and oh, it it actually worked. Okay, I told them anyways, I guess I got to look at some of the backend stuff. But the reason why for some of them, I have actually gotten them the redirect to go back to my website is because I want them to go to their email. To get my email out of their junk mail, because it's gonna, it happens every single time. And then they're never going to get my emails. So that was something that I was going to play around with. Um, but then my five steps, uh, this was basically to help with my PCOS and my migraines. Clean up my diet, ditch those candles, um, synthetic body products, household cleaners, and then the essential oils. And then at the bottom, um, learn, I have a link to learn more about essential oils. And then this links over to um fifty different toxic products I switched using a lot of essential oils. And then they can contact me or order the kit. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure if this is the right way to go. I'm testing it out a little bit. But for me, sometimes I find that I just want to purchase the product. Once I I hear the person say, I want like, these are all the amazing things. Now go purchase the kit. Um, so then I have a little section over here, which is actually how I've been able to help people sign up. Because I find the Canadian website, oh my gosh, is so difficult to sign people up. It's not like the US website. We have like trip tips and tricks and all the things, so they can watch my video. And then this link is here. And actually, my members use this as well to help people sign up who are um abroad. But I did like the idea of picking up the phone and actually doing it with them. Um, I just didn't think of that one. But this has been working out really, really well. And then I also have like a breakdown of the kit cost. Um, and all the the little things about it if they end up on this page before they actually get to the um, the class. So.
Amazing, amazing. So uh, we've we've had some questions come in. Um, let me see. Good to do. Um, yeah, there there was a question that was asked if all of the steps that we're talking about are actually included in Go For Gold. The answer is yes, right? And it's not just um, it's not just the steps like, uh, you know, plug, here's all the tech stuff, right? Really critically, like at the core of this program is Martha's own strategy for getting to gold in six months. And by the way, you guys. Um, I want you to come on. I want you to come on and say hello in just a minute. Beata, thank you so very, very much for coming on and sharing your story. What piece of advice would you give to someone getting started with Go For Gold?
I would say the, the exact same thing that Emily said, do it step by step. And don't move on to the next one till you've done the work. I would also say that it's really good to see the final product on what your website's gonna look like. Because all throughout this, I was so confused of where my web, like, why my website looked like Young Living? If everything else we were talking about was kind of removing the Young Living branding. So it's really helpful to see what the final website is gonna look like, so that you know, okay, I need to create a guide that's gonna go onto my website. Because at first, my guide was how to get like flawless skin, which is great. But that doesn't really relate to my bat signal necessarily. And so the whole five-step protocol was something a little bit more basic that I think everyone could connect to rather than just like a skincare protocol. But the skincare protocol got a lot more leads in my Instagram than my five-step protocol did. So it's great to have both and it's great to switch it up. And especially if you have some sort of blog on skincare, then you could link that specific one over. And I have started a blog too. I didn't show you guys, I only have one post up. But I am going to do another post today.
Awesome. Fantastic, yeah, yeah, that, that is, that is the best advice, you guys. It's to, once you get in, just put your blinders on, trust us. We've, we've put them in the order they're in for a reason. Especially where the tech stuff is concerned. You, you don't wanna build the things that you're going to use in the order you see them, right? You don't build a house by buying drapes first, right? You have to pour a foundation, put the walls in, put the roof on. You don't see a completed house until it's a completed house, right? And most of us, if this is not something we're familiar with, which is like all of us, except, you know, that's, it's something Martha and I have a background in specifically, and that's why we put our heads together on this. So you can, you get the shortcut from the people who have been doing this professionally for years. So without further ado, hey Martha, why don't you come out and chat, chat with us?
Well, hey, hey.
I have been listening to this whole thing, and I don't know if you could see me earlier. I had legit, you guys, as I was watching this, I was driving on my way home. My mom just got her new, you don't, you don't care about this, but my mom just got a new independent living place she's gonna live at. So we figured that out this morning. But anyway, I was in the car listening like this, like a goofball, listening to, to your guys' stuff. I don't know if you could see me, but I kind of hope you could. But yeah, this is awesome. First of all, Beata and Emily, thank you so much for sharing what this is doing for you. There's, people don't, and, and I love that systems were defined at the very beginning. People don't realize what a system actually is. A business cannot survive without a system, right? It cannot survive, oh, my dog is upset. It cannot survive and it can't thrive. You can accidentally get some wins, but you can't predict your own success, right? Like, so what Emily said is like, now I see how I'm gonna get to Royal Crown Diamond because you have a system and you work the system, right? That is the kind of confidence and dare I say swagger that we get whenever we, and I do dare, that we get whenever we start implementing these things. Because now it's, and you alluded to sort of the onboarding process that happens in corporate America, right? They're not wrong. Corporate America isn't doing systems wrong, okay? There may be other things we may not enjoy, but they're not doing systems wrong, okay? We have to, if we're going to, if we're gonna actually win here, we need to be showing up like we're mini corporations, okay? Because there are, there are mom and pop businesses that are, are kind of like how we were doing things in the past, where we're throwing things at the wall, they're trying and, and, and sometimes failing and trying again. And that's sort of a situation that they're in. You look instead to the corporations, they have developed systems. They have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to develop systems. So anyone that comes through their door can do the thing because they need for it to be that solid, right? That is how we have to build our business. And that is how people feel good being builders under us, right? Or with us, I hate under. But like being builders with us, right? Because then we can all go together because we have these things that, yeah, I got this. I'm gonna do this and I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna do this and I'm gonna do that. It doesn't need to be vilified. Systems don't need to be vilified. There's nothing wrong with the system. And just in case anybody doesn't understand this, classes, like what Ashley said earlier, that's a lead magnet or a campaign. That's the top of a system. It's what brings people into the system. But if you don't have a way to follow up with those leads, because people need to hear something between seven and fifteen times before they make a buying decision typically. If you don't have a way to be able to do that in a heart-centered way, then they're not going to become, even if they, they could come to all of your classes. But that doesn't mean that they're gonna join and become a member because they need to hear things many times. That is, that is a lead magnet. That is how you bring leads in, right? You still need the system. There are people unfortunately, in, in all sorts of businesses, but network marketing specifically. And I'm not sure why this is, I feel like we're just maybe on the, on the cutting edge of it. But there are people unfortunately that say, well, no, this is relationship. And this is about relationship building and things like that. What do you think we're doing? What do you think we're doing? We're not plugging people into robots. We're not like taking love and hearts out of this thing, right? That work, we are systemizing relationship building. So get this, you don't lose the relationships, okay? That's the whole honking point, you guys. Like that's, and this was, I did not expect to jump on a soapbox, but it's like, this is what we're doing here. So that's, I, that's also, hi, I'm Martha.
Somebody get a fire hose, this woman is lit.
It's so crazy to me. No, we need to do relationships, what? Yeah, of course we do, right?
Yes.
Let's do them right.
The most amazing thing about utilizing systems like this is that you can create a buzz around what you're doing and get thousands of people interested in what you're doing and get the door open to those relationships without you having to open a thousand Facebook DM windows, right? So that you can filter that thousand people who are interested right now into the twenty who are ready right now, who you can talk to right now, or who can follow that brilliant page that Beata made, that I think could probably work reasonably well at scale, right? Like here's, here's a video that shows you how to navigate this kind of complicated process. So long as you're giving that page to your people with that link on it, right? Yeah, that's, guys, these are examples of systems, over and over again, systems, systems, systems. And, and, and it's, it's not as complicated as it sounds. It's really not.
Can I add something?
Please.
I just wanna say that like when, a lot of these people have been building to platinum, to diamond and above, they were building at a time where not as many network marketing companies and parties were happening. I find that literally, I get invited to even online parties all the time now. And people, especially moms, who like are typically the ones doing the parties, stay-at-home moms. And we, we can't just go to every single thing out there anymore. And that's what I've been finding is that even though I get the advice to go rent a place downtown in my town, who, which has six thousand people on a good day. And like, we live in a very small community. And I know people have grown to Royal Crown Diamonds in a very small community. But it, it's a little bit different now. And there are systems, you see them all the time. Even with, oh, what's his name? He's doing a webinar thing today. He's, he claps a lot when he speaks. Anyways, he, he just posted something on Instagram through a sponsored ad. And then through that, it gets people into his campaign and gets people into his contacts, where he can then tell people when his events are. And he's doing this free online training today. And I'm gonna get a text message right before the class starts. And none of this stuff, like, it doesn't need to be overly complicated. We don't need to like bash on systems. I don't understand why people bash on systems, they're so helpful.
Is it, are you talking about Tony Robbins?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's flooding, it's flooding in the comments here. Why wouldn't you wanna run your business a little more like Tony Robbins does?
Yeah.
You know.
bloggers who, who get people into their systems, they become successful, to teach people how to do their system. And it's honestly, it's so helpful and it's working.
That's amazing. We've got, somebody asked, you're in GetOiling, but you wanna know how to get access to Go For Gold? You wanna go to GetOiling.com/goforgold? We'll put a link below the recording to this video. Also, let's put in the chat, just for the, the sake of this being something that's relevant moving on. If we could put, Martha, I think you have a code that, that, that you're using right now. You could put that in the chat.
Man, I will.
Do, do take advantage of that while you still can. And we'll put that below the recording of this video for as long as it's valid.
Yeah, it's gonna be going away very soon, you guys. So make sure, this actually gets fifty bucks off, gets you. Oh, my word. Okay, sorry. There we go. It is in there.
Awesome, so there were a couple of questions, I think a lot of them that got answered. If you guys have any questions while we're here right now, bring them in. Karen was asking if you do any Instagram training, Martha?
I have that, I have a free sort of how-to Instagram. And that is, Herman, calm down, my Pomeranian is losing his mind over here. That is actually in the Gold-getters group. So if you're not in the Gold-getters group, first of all, A, you need to be in there. And so does everyone that you know that is building a business or wants to build a business with Young Living. But it's in the units section, and just come here, buddy. It's in the units section and it's under, I believe it's under social media. But what you're gonna find in the units section is a goldmine of tidbits here and there that are just like awesome. So I believe it's under social, I believe it's under social media trainings. And there's an Instagram one and there's also a Facebook one, so.
Awesome, yeah. And I think that a part of the system that you teach, which is, you know, really at the core. Because again, like what we did was we took the core of Martha's training and then built it out with, with tech systems to support it, so that you can be even more effective with it, right? Because Martha, if you had all of those things rocking and rolling for you, it would have been six months to like platinum or diamond or something.
No joke, you guys. Seriously, plus with all of this support, I was doing it alone, right? Like I was doing it just, I don't, totally throwing stuff at the wall to make something work and didn't have the support that literally you guys have, an amazing amount of support. So yeah.
Do, shout out to our support. Showing hands, everybody, raise a hands for support if you know and love how quickly you hear back from GetOiling. But what I was, what I was gonna say is, along the lines of Instagram, part of the system is, is, is really kind of plugging in this idea of curiosity posting as, as a way to get leads. And if you're someone who hasn't even started setting up the tech systems yet, it's a thing that you can do. And, and that applies the same to Instagram as it does to Facebook, right? Yeah, so I mean, any, any social platform.
It's, I mean, again, it's relationship building. So as long as there are people that you're talking to, it's going to work a lot the same.
Right, right, using systems doesn't turn people into numbers.
No, right, not a good system anyway.
Nope, nope, nope. All right, cool, cool. So guys, please, if you've got any questions, bring them in. If not, let's, let's just kind of open the panel up here. Emily, Beata, if you have anything else you wanna add, anything you wanna chat about, you're welcome to. We can kind of, you know, just have, have some fun here before we go. There was a question here about whether or not there are GetOiling tutorials. There are tons, look at our YouTube channel. And there is, when you're logged into GetOiling, there's a little question mark. The most powerful thing that you have access to, aside from your entire system, if you want some help right away, is to hit the little question mark, type in the topic that you're looking for. So custom pages, or a landing page, or a campaign, or something like that. And there will be a number of different options that pop up. It'll take you probably ninety percent of the time, straight to the exact answer that you're looking for. And if you don't find that answer, we are just an email away.
I was just gonna say, if people are looking for just a visual on an Instagram that kind of looks nice, cohesive, and one that isn't like all Young Living, you can go check out my Instagram, it's at Beata.shadgit. And you can probably type my first name in and see it. But at the end of the day, when people ask me questions, like especially Young Living people, and they're like, well, how did you get this whole website going? I always just get people to go over to Martha's course because I'm not gonna reiterate everything, because it was like a lot of content for only like seventy-seven dollars, which it was, it's a course that's worth well over a thousand dollars, I'm not gonna lie. It's a lot of content, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I wanna add on to that. So a year ago in January, I hired a professional social media marketing manager to teach me all the things that the cool millennials were doing. She has a master's in digital marketing. I spent twenty-five hundred dollars. And I did learn stuff, but nothing that was moving the needle. I, I have the skills and I applied it to this website. But a year later, and my husband always was like the background tech guy. So he, I had my website on either GoDaddy or Squarespace and I tell him what I'd want. And I'd just put in the pictures and he would do everything, because it was, some things were over my head and I felt was outsourced to him. The GetOiling system is so easy that I have not one time come to him, except for to layer my own domain. I didn't wanna get into that because I had to go to GoDaddy. But other than that, building it, designing it, uploading it, everything a hundred percent was me, which is huge. And so that was awesome. It's a fraction of the price. And we have access to Facebook communities and direct access to the programmer. If I have any questions, Greg is like, in his life, we're like, answer right away. I mean, it's a steal, it's a steal. And then the course, everything I've learned, so I have been around for a while. And I have done all the courses and I've worked with Royal Crown Diamonds. And I've learned a lot from everyone. But I think Martha has taken the same things that they're talking about, but putting structure around it, which was like, for me. So I have been telling my team, ten people a day, it's the TPC Club, ten people a day, which I did make up, I learned from somebody else. But what it meant was, like and comment on ten people's accounts a day. Say hi. Like, that wasn't moving the needle. When I saw Ford, and I'm sure you didn't create it, but you brought it to the table, I'm like, so simple. But it's not just making small talk, you're giving me something to say to people. And then you give me a step to do next, and something to do next. So it's like all these like ambiguous things of build relationships, get them into Young Living, get them on ER. But like you filled in all the blanks. And so I know I can bring people on and say, here you go, this is what you do. And if you're serious, you'll do it. And if not, I'll handle share and roll and I'll take over. But yeah, so, thank you.
Yeah, I love that. I love that so much. Fill in the blanks, that's what we're doing.
Beautiful, beautiful. Thank you guys for being here, so appreciate it. We're seeing a lot of like, you know, love for the course, love for you Martha, love for you guys for coming in and sharing Emily and Beata. Yeah, awesome. So who's, who's excited to actually start methodically showing up on purpose in their business, right? Who's, who is excited to do that, right? I am so inspired, like Emily, by your story, your, your renewed commitment, right? And, and purpose and excitement to your business. It is, guys, it's hard, right? When, when you do a thing and everybody above you, or you know, blah, blah, blah. When everybody's like, do this, this is the thing that works, this is the only thing that works. And you do it, you feel like you're beating your head up against the wall. It's, it's hard not to lose yourself and then obviously to lose your people because what you do duplicates, good or bad, right? The one thing, the one and only thing that will work forever and for everyone is to tap into who you are, communicate that and get people curious, so they come to you. Having systems in place just helps you do more of that, right? And that's exactly what you're taught to do inside of the system. And, and just step by step and support and just an amazing community. So guys, if you are on the fence, if you're not sure, maybe, I don't know, doing another thing, go over to BecauseOfGaryGold getters group on Facebook. That is, I mean, I don't know, probably by the end of this week, it's gonna be ten thousand people.
It's growing fast, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's Team YL, totally free, free training in there, lots of it, great stuff. Martha Goes Live, there's all kinds of goodies in there. And then of course, if you get over to, to getting started with us. And for those of you who did purchase here live and you need support, just reply to the email that you get so that you can get that code applied that we talked about, because you didn't know, sorry. But, but yeah, you guys, let's do this. We are so excited to see Team YL rising together, right? Martha, I'm gonna let you close this out.
Oh man, well, shoot, I feel like I need to pray. So you know, where you're just like, man, let's just bless all the people, right? But really, you guys, this is, this is actually the stuff that's working. What Ashley said, you're seeing it here. We didn't pay these folks, they didn't come on, they're not paid. We didn't pay these folks, they didn't come on, they're not paid actors. They're coming on because they want to come on and share the truth with you that this is what's working, and it's what's working because it's supposed to work. It's what all of, it's what Amazon does, you guys. It's what, it's what big corporations do, but we can do it in a micro way that we can still see that massive success that big corporations have. So if you're ready to do this, if what you've been doing maybe could be better, if you feel like you want to be growing faster or you want to grow in a more predictable way, then you need to do this, and that's the bottom line. There's nothing wrong with any other way of growing, but this is predictable, okay? So if you want it to be predictable, then let's do this, and there we have it.
Awesome, thank you, guys, again, so much for being here. Thank you, Martha, Beata, Emily, Get Oilings team. And for all of you being here, showing up to grow your business today. Yes, you can share this replay with your team. If you have signed up for these weekly work sessions, getoilings.com/weeklyworksession, you'll get the replay of all of these great trainings that we do, and you never know who we're gonna bring on. So keep an eye out for your email today, subscribe to our YouTube channel, youtube.com/getoilings. You'll also see the replay there. And uh yeah, you guys, let's let's crush this, we'll see you in the group. Bye, everybody, guys.